But she's right. So, why don't we go ahead and get started, open up the meeting? Welcome, everybody. Um, we have a quorum with online and in the room. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes of October seventeenth. Um, I didn't see any changes go through. Does anybody have any amendments to the minutes? May I get a motion to approve? Sam's approval, Sylvia's seconds. Okay, all those in favor? Hi, okay, great, let's pass. And so the next thing is the um, staff employment and benefits program.
Yeah, so uh, you guys have seen all this. Some of you have seen it in multiple iterations, the Personnel Subcommittee, but uh, I think you guys have both seen each of these documents at various times over the last month. But I'm hoping for tonight, obviously if you have any last minute questions, be a good time. But I'm hoping for tonight, I don't think it requires some people on the motion or anything like that, but I, I want the something of a nod of approval, recognition that, hey, we're ready to put this thing forward. I, I do, you know, believe that we've put together a very creative and innovative package. It's not grossly overpriced, uh, but the benefits are really good. There are some novel benefits that are not in the healthcare plan that I think uh, are attractive to many of our employees. And then there are some novel benefits uh, that are included in the healthcare plan, which I also think are just um, you know, we're gonna try them out, right? The one being, the biggest one, I think, being uh, free older health clinic, uh, which I, you know, initially I thought like, what is this? Why try it? I think he's talked about like, would you go do it? And um, you know, I think for the employees of the library, for those that um, I'm really, really interested in this one. I'm hoping that it will pay off. And so, it is not an inexpensive piece of the package, so that is, that is a a chunk of money for us to proffer uh, forward, but for the benefit to the employee and the employee's um, dependence, um, it could be great, but they'll have to enroll, right? So, this is gonna be one of those ones that we're gonna watch for the year, first year or two to see if it works. It's gonna require a certain level of enrollment for us to justify really the cost, I think. Um, but yeah, if we get that kind of enrollment in year one and year two, and as uh, Ronnie mentioned last meeting, uh, they're gonna open it up to the staff in December on a free basis, just to get them to trial. And I have to say, I am gonna try it, if I have me and my family to go in and see like, what do I think? So, I'm, I, I think it's, um, I think it's an interesting plan. You know, from the overall benefits guide, we really went through theirs with uh, fine tooth comb, um, there were a lot of hands in making this. I'm so appreciative of the fact that uh, we did crowds for it to a certain extent. We opened it up initially, I think, to six readers, including some B M E A staff and supervisor and some others that just, we asked them, could you read it through and see your reaction? And they provided us a ton of great feedback, which the document got better. Right? Uh, the leadership team had had a chance to look through it as well. And then we opened it up to the staff at large, we just got tons of great feedback. And so in the end, the benefits package is one that we worked on together with the entire staff. And but please, yeah.
The handbook.
Yeah, the handbook. And I, I really think um, I, I think it's a really good initial statement still alive. So I'm happy to take any questions that you may have about either one of it. And I think what I'm looking for is not like uh, a vote, I don't think it requires a vote, but I, but I would like some consideration of our approval when you guys do that.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, and maybe you guys can answer this, but we had uh, looked at a near final version of this a month or so ago. I was just wondering if, if there are any major changes between then and now that we know about. So whenever it's appropriate to maybe summarize those for us. And go ahead, Jen.
No, I, why, why don't you take, my question's pretty specific, so i- if you wanna take Johnny's question first, I can ask mine afterward.
So the only substantive change that was made to the handbook was when we, you decided that we would increase the available sick time uh, to all employees from sixty hours a year to eighty hours a year. So that, the, the package, that's the only substantive change that was made from the time of
Great. Jen?
Yeah, there were just a couple of places where it said, insert link here. Some of them, I think, were, were, were sort of, were obvious where they would go. One of them that I had a question about was where the compensation philosophy link was going to link to. I, I don't know if that's like an internal document or a presentation we've given to staff or something like that, but I just wanted to to understand where that, where that link would eventually land.
Will be an internal link on the Paylacity website for, for staff.
Okay.
We're working, I'm working with a consultant right now on that um, compensation structure, like the pay pay levels and rates, um, and she's also going to recommend a compensation philosophy to us based on the methodology that we're using to come up with a structure and sort of what she knows about our benefits and our increase in minimum wage and that sort of thing. And I, I think that we'll bring that to the board as soon as it's ready for your review before we publish it.
Okay, cool, thank you.
What's the timing on that be, do you think?
I don't know yet, um. She's supposed to send me something tomorrow and then meet with me on Friday. I'm hopeful that we'll have something in a week or two, but I don't know. Punted a little bit.
The city uh, city published all of the various pay grades, ranges, all this type of stuff. That wasn't necessarily our intent, although that's what Employers Council recommends, I don't know if they are gonna recommend it. We'll see. So that, that's kind of what I think, so at least some staff will be interested in seeing. Uh, we're not ready yet with that. Um, we're trying to, you know, Jennifer's working with Employers Council to come up with what our, right, ranges are for all different types of positions and where new positions, where, where, what range the new positions fall into.
The other big decision is what our hiring range is gonna be for new positions. Currently, the city has overlapped with candidates that meet preferred qualifications often get paid as much or sometimes a little more than employees who've been with the organization a while and have, you know, more years of experience. So we're gonna see if we can still have competitive uh, offer ranges, but maybe not kind of impinge on the wages that staff already that are here or more of that wage compression. Not sure if we can meet that goal, but we're gonna try, yeah.
Yeah, just because I was asked this the other day and I, I wasn't sure, um, do we uh, compensate in some way for a, a, a current or, you know, potential hired employee who is bilingual, who is, yeah, so that's a, an extra bump of stipend or I don't know what we call it.
So it's a, it's a one step above the regular level of the whatever position is. And it's not required for all positions, so like, we have a requirement um, for some of the library specialists, some of the librarians. There's a third one. Cataloging. We don't have that requirement for materials handlers. But we're also looking at the option for part-time like materials handlers or other staff who maybe aren't in a role where that is available to them, um, if they're called upon to use that skill in like a public meeting or some kind of outreach activity that they could um, uh, log those hours as substitute hours at a higher rate of pay. So we'd have a translator substitute.
When I looked at this um, document, whatever it was, a month and a half ago, I can't find it now and so it may have been removed, but I, it looks like it might have been taken from like the City of Boulder language, but it had referenced something about connection or relationship with elected officials. And I was wondering like if it meant city, I mean, the one I was looking at, I was just thinking like that must have come from the city and it referenced city council. But I don't see it and I don't recall, I thought it was like sort of in the first few pages or something about but that must have been taken out for sure, right?
I don't remember it, you know, we did, uh, so, yeah, we did.
There was a mention of it in the, it's now section two, and it was talking about um, at-will employment and who has the authority, so we did, we used a template from Employers Council originally in it.
And that's what referenced elected.
Wasn't, we didn't update it and it has been updated since then.
Okay.
We also moved that section from the beginning and started out with like library.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. So I wasn't dreaming it, okay.
Oh, you weren't.
Okay. And then as I was flipping through it now, I just, um, I was just looking at, you know, the conflicts of interest and and those issues, and I like the way that those are spelled out and supplemental employment, I wondered how often does that occur in the organization? Are there, I mean, is there? Do you have an awareness of that in terms of?
You know, a lot of employees will report it to us, I suspect there may be some of them, but you know, it's uh, I don't, I, there, there were a number of questions that came up in the drafts about like, if I work for a organization that partners, they, and that's not interest, they're just a wager for a different organization. So that, they did, it did come up, is that where you were thinking of in terms of?
Yeah, no, I just want, well, I, I just wondered if, you know, maybe in the past, people have had to because of other benefits or the compensation was lower, you know, their hours were unpredictable or something. But maybe now it's, it could be less likely that people would have to have second jobs or?
No, we have a lot of, we have a lot of part-time employees.
Okay, that's.
The, um, I, I, I would assume most of, most of the part-time employees work out their jobs as well and, and are engaged in other work activities, whether it's, you know, privately, they're banned, whatever it is, they, they do other work, supplements their income. And yeah, there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in some cases, um, people who have uh, worked at partners' hours, Boulder Bookstores partner hours, like we have uh, you know, Boulder Bookstore where they sell books and library that kick up percentage of profits over the foundation. We've had, and there are multiple, former Boulder Bookstore employees who work here in the library. Uh, but we've had people who've been working in both places at the same time as well. Uh, it's not a conflict for them, they're.
Yeah. But this didn't change or prohibit anything that had been in place, right? It still allows for that. And then I liked just the term romantic relationships. It's like, I mean, it must be like, still a, an okay term to use, I guess, in the HR bed uh, applications. Handbooks, romantic relationships.
It's there, you know, there's a lot of things that some organizations do in many ways, we took the liberal approach and all of them. If there's no permission, maybe that unless, obviously, it's a person in supervisor capacity, I mean, that's not allowed, but um, you know, there are lots of templates and places that, you know, love hiring family members and people that have connections, it, it works out well in that case, so.
No pun intended, huh? Okay, no, that's all. Jen, anything from you guys? Well, I think it looks great. I think your process with staff has been terrific, and I think your process with us has been great too, bringing us, you know, bits and pieces so we could do it in manageable chunks, um. So yeah, I think this has been a great process, it just looks like a great guide, I mean, I'd sign up. So, that's how other people do. Um, so can we just give this a nod of the head and say, well done? And I'm seeing nods all around, thumbs up, yeah, great.
We're gonna, the, the health benefits package will go out to our staff and most of them have seen it in the draft of the packet uh, from now, but they'll, they'll get it officially Thursday.
That's a huge chunk of work that has been done, good job, you guys. Both the subcommittee and staff have just worked like, like leavers on that. Okay, so then back to the twenty twenty-four budget, um, David, anything you wanted to update us on from last time?
Oh, I mean, I apologize for their not paying a graphic representation, which I know you requested, I requested as well. I didn't get it, so it's like, it's not ready to go. Um, we'll try to have it ready for when we publish the final packet, so there will be a document called the Boulder Public Library District twenty-two budget, because of the webpage, on your webpage, um. And in that instance, by that time, I hope we will have a visual representation that's, that's actually. No, there were some great questions that came in, I think some of them were for you, Kim. Uh, the question was about like, what happens with changes uh, to the budget over the course of time? Uh, I think there was an interesting question that came to me and Johnny from Anita about breaking out uh, board support items or, or maybe I have a different title than that, but um, I, I, I think all those are great and I'm I'm happy to take whatever questions you may have. But, but the budget itself did not change substance.
So Benita, did you wanna raise your um, issue that you raised about on Sunday? My issue just related to finding where the budget for the trustees um, sort of sits related to, you know, the expenses that come from the trustees administration and our business and um, you know, David clarified that it's under administration. And I was asking if that could be pulled out clearly so that you could see it as, you know, trustee Board of Trustees, I don't even know what a term I used, business or, um, it wasn't board support, but it was, you know, sort of our budget, um. But if, you know, and, and so it's not to add in any items, it was, it was helpful to just affirm that it is in administration at approximately a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars um, for the year. Um, but I just think from a like, public-facing side, if somebody was looking for that, it would be helpful to, you know, identify it, so it could be that it's just in your budget document under like non-personnel budget, it's just listed there or where you have administration. It's maybe, you know, it says admin and communications and maybe it just, you know, trustee operation or trustee support or have to find the term.
Good term.
I can pull it up here too.
David, did I hear you say that um, audit was a part of that line item?
Well, yeah, I, I, you know, Jennifer reminded me that we didn't know how much the auditor was gonna call, cost, but we put a hundred and fifty-seven, six, I think, in that number, it was kind of our best guesstimate. My assumption was that it was gonna pay for uh, legal fees and auditor fees, which are by right, your direct expenses, like your hiring and, and or firing uh, the auditor and.
You also had meetings and travel.
And so we can call it out, uh, it was one fifty-eight, six, I think.
Um, and district board governance is what I had
Yeah.
sort of proposed.
So, and so we could, we could just uh, break it out on a line right above administration or above library.
Maybe a subsection of administration?
No, I think that what they're just asking.
Or you could pull out the number, right? I mean, pull out.
Number and make it a line under non-personal expenses and just put it either, you know, one, somewhere on that list of uh, trustee administration.
I like Benita's suggestion of district board governance rather than like board support, because then it just sounds like we're getting massages and stuff with it.
So I.
What are you missing for dinner tonight? Um, so this actually raises a question that I um, was kind of going back and forth with Johnny about earlier. Um, so Kim, I, can you just clarify for me, are, is, does your firm represent the district or the Board of Trustees for the district?
The Board of, the Board of Trustees, so by law, the Board of Trustees is the governing body of the district. We represent the board.
Okay, so if, you know, down the road hypothetically, if the library um, district uh, that's separate from the board, if they needed an attorney, then we would need to, they would need to find a separate attorney?
Yeah, but you won't, that won't happen.
Oh, I know, I, I'm, well, but I'm just hypothetically asking if that's.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the library itself is not a separate entity.
Yeah, that's.
The district is the entity and the board is the controlling, it, it's like the brains.
Yeah, no, no, I get that, I just was trying to clarify that, um, because I think that that explains to me why we would put the legal bill in the Board of Trustees bill, because to me, I guess I would have thought it was just an organizational cost, but that clarifies it, thanks.
So if everybody's okay with that, I don't think that's a substantive change to the budget, so we don't get a motion, um, just to present that so that it's more visible. I think that would be great. And just to step aside for a minute, Cara um, is driving and having trouble zooming in, so she said if, if we have a quorum, she's gonna try and just drop out, and I said, fine. So she won't join us. So what is the amount then?
It was one fifty-eight, six.
Okay.
Uh, is what we had set aside, but yeah. That's what we'll put in the line, and we'll just subtract that from the administration N P E line, so that'll be
And so in that is like the audit and and label?
I, I had thought, but it's not, it's not, it's, and or travel, that would come out of the state.
And it, it, it does go to the board support or the new line, that's where the budget.
One fifty-eight, six.
Yeah.
They're traveling, okay, so it doesn't include your travel. So if you were to travel for a thing, you can.
That's where that would.
Yeah, you would, we would reverse your mileage.
It's just a few thousand dollars, it's like five to eight thousand dollars for the meals and, you know, stuff.
Just think through a public-facing side of it, I think it's really important that we be able to point to it and know it's there, so thank you. And I think when we get to the conversation about um, governance, long-term governance, probably after the first of the year, maybe we wanna look at that, um, you know, we look at which committees we're really doing, and we talked about the advocacy, if we really wanna have somebody go to D C or something like that, see if those budgets are adequate. So let's sort of make a note to agenda that at some point. If agenda that is a firm.
It is now.
I think you should think of it as like, you know, it's something that we want, we all want for you to do, right? So it, and, and if the money is not covered in one fifty-eight, six, there are other budgets that we can move the money from, and in the end, it is one bottom line, and it's your bottom line, right? It's not mine or somebody else's, it's like, so we can move money from one account to another as long as the bottom line matches. And to that, and I guess Doug's here, right? So I don't, who did he send those questions to besides me? I, he sent some really good questions, I know.
Before we leave that item, so I just wanted to ask, in the twenty twenty-three budget column, will we then have, under the the district board governance, will we have then the expenses of our legal counsel, you know, in that column?
Yeah, well, when we get to the end of the year, which will be February, uh, where we have the actuals, expenses will populate this. So you'll have, when you next look at the budget, uh, will be a bunch of people in April. And then what you would see at that time would be the actual twenty twenty-three expenses of the budgeted amount, which is pretty open-ended, and then the actual expenditures as they are, so we'll have. And you know, this was a guesstimate again. Yeah, I think the cost of the hires, I know the costs are already higher.
Okay, thank you, so continue on, please, thank you.
Secondary thing was, did you receive the?
Yeah, I responded to it.
Oh, because I don't know if I saw the response, but nevertheless, maybe I did. And it was just about like, there was a question that kind of arose around, what happens if you change the amounts of money? And it would be nice to just.
Yeah, so you have the power to amend your budget at any time, you're supposed to amend it before you spend, but that often doesn't happen. Um, when you do that, we have to have a public hearing, just like we did with the original budget. But the only time you have to amend the budget is if you change one of the three major categories, which is um, uh, capital operations. You don't have two of those, so I think you'll be able to do it pretty frequently.
What was the last one, Kim? You said capital, operations and?
Debt.
Debt, okay, got it.
And debt doesn't include your leases or anything like that, it would just be bonds or, you know, revenue bonds or, or general allocation bonds.
What's a, Doug's questions were, if the revenue that we have coming in next year is larger than we have certified in our mill levy this year, what do we do? Do we adjust the mill levy? Do we adjust the revenues? And that was what Kim was saying, we adjust the revenues. If, you know, we end up with way more, there's always the option to lower the mill rate for a year. Um, but those are the options we have relative to it, but there's nothing, it sounds like, we have to do is we're long, we're within the, the framework that we have.
The only time you need to adjust the mill levy is if you've gone over and you haven't detabored, which you have. Um, but at that point, you can do a temporary mill levy reduction to refund that excess money.
How do we handle like grant revenues that come in mid-year?
Grant revenues can become a problem under Tabor.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll watch those as they start coming in, let us know, you know, if, if they're over ten percent of your total revenue, we'll have to.
Do you speak bladder?
Uh, if they're over ten percent of the total revenue, we'll have to, to address that. Tabor limits the amount of money, the amount of revenue you can get, period. It allows for grants, but if the grants are coming from another government, then Tabor is basically saying, somebody's paying taxes for that, so we're gonna limit the grains.
So grants that would come from the state would be handled differently than grants that come from the foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
And do they need to be appropriated in order for us to spend them?
Yes.
So through an adjustment?
Yep, okay, so there'll be general, there'll be revenues, general revenues, and then you'll appropriate.
Okay, so if you couldn't hear that, the grants need to be appropriated, so we'd have budget adjustments as those come in, which is similar to what the city does, I think.
I should break there, but you're not going to appropriate them as this grant is being appropriated for this purpose. You've just got a grant revenue that'll go into your general operating budget, and it'll be appropriated from there.
Okay.
So you have grant restrictions, but those don't have anything to do with the
The budget.
appropriation.
Okay, got it.
Was your point about ten percent? Sorry, um, Tabor puts a limit on um, revenue, uh, grants over ten percent. So you have to begin, you may have to begin reducing your tax revenues if you get grants that exceed ten percent from other government entities, okay, thanks.
And for us, that would be basically the statewide grant.
Right, and that's, and that thirty thousand dollars you have to get to. Yeah, two, two, yeah, right, and, and grants from another state funding agency, that would be at first.
Yeah. And as we learned at CalCon last week, they only have like three million dollars in that budget for the whole state right now, it's one of the things they're hoping to increase. I don't know if prop H H revenues will help fill that. Or if it's just going to public education, but yeah, we'll see. Okay, other questions on the budget before we reopen the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna reopen the public hearing on the budget, is there anyone from the public who wants to speak to us?
I'll just say.
Please give your names.
Chris Barnes, Zachary Dragan, for the Library Foundation. I am really, really happy with all the work that you all and library staff and people put together a budget that delivers on the promises that the voters signed off on. I'm going through here and noting just all the highlights, and this is a um, generationally significant document, and I just wanna um, mark that there's a new future for the library, thanks to the voters, that is reflected in this budget and our communities.
Great, thank you, yeah, thank you. Um, Amber, did you have any questions you wanted to ask us while we're in a public hearing?
Thank you, I'm just listening tonight.
Okay, great. All right, well, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and um, unless there's more discussion, I think we just need a motion to approve, and we have one looking out for us.
I move to approve.
Second. So you need to, Jen, we need the resolution number, Kim?
You don't have to.
Okay. Okay. And so just for process, everybody understands, we do the approval and then there's a resolution um, that has to be. Um, that has to be filled out that Sylvia, you'll need to sign when you get back, and I'll sign. Um, and that's where it's. You want to speak, it's all clear to you. You got it? Okay, so Jennifer has um. Moved to approve the twenty twenty four. Library district budget. Who wants to second?
I seconded.
Need a seconds? Okay, all those in favor? Yay, all right, big milestone, yay.
Exciting.
Yay.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I I I I, Chris stole my thunder from the public, but I I um, I I am, I'm. Walking on clouds, right? Like it's. Um, so yeah, it's every single thing that we have identified in master plans for the last twenty seven years, two decades. And we're starting them all. I mean, we won't finish them all next year, but we're starting them all. And that's something that um we never even close to prior. So it's pretty huge. Um, I know there was a lot of stuff in it, and it's a lot of numbers and everything else, but ultimately it comes back to those major community engagements that we did. In twenty, two thousand six and seven, and two thousand seventeen and eighteen, all the hard work that the community put in, all the hard work. Library commissions put in, uh, all the hard work that so many staff put in, putting those master plans together, and. Finding out what truly the community wanted from our library. I think in the twenty eighteen plan, you have thirty five hundred people participate in that process. So remarkable. Remarkable that we're actually able to um fund it. Um. There was often this conversation within the city. Uh, I get it, but I never did get it. But I kind of talked, referred to some of these vision plans. This is your vision plan. I was like. Vision plan is all shit we should have done ten years ago. That's what I would say. It's all the stuff we should have done ten years ago. But we're finally getting started on all the stuff we should have done ten years ago, and I'm so pleased. Uh, I think within the next three to five years, we'll execute on every single one of them. And that's my goal uh and promise to you is that we'll do everything we can to execute on all of those goals. And then we'll begin this process again, and then we'll really be uh engaged in a vision, I think. And that will be extremely exciting, a lot of fun. And I I do want to reiterate what I said and hopefully make very clear in the. preamble I gave you a couple of weeks before the budget. Um. The gravity and the seriousness of dealing with public's money. Uh, it's not something that is lost on me, and I know it is not lost on you, because you are the public, and so it it is something that we will take very seriously, and we will watch every single penny. Um, and make sure it goes as far as we can make it stretch. So thank you all very much.
And I just want to thank everybody again, the budget and finance ladies and staff and David and Jennifer for creating a budget that is simple to understand, easy to access. You know, the public wants to see what we're doing. It's it's out there and pretty transparent, and it'll be great when the graphics can be there to. To add that to the package, but I think we'll have it all ready when we finally get our real website up and running, and that will just be such a gift. No more migraines looking at budgets. Okay, um, next item is the director update.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um. So we are in the process of uh looking at auditors. I think we'll probably have uh the finance. Subcommittee will have a auditor to recommend for you in a couple of weeks, because we won't be meeting until November seventh, next meeting. I'm hopeful that we'll have a auditor at that time, the recommend board. Um, and I appreciate the fact that we're finally getting copies of the I G A and the insurance stuff. Uh, because I will meet with insurance brokerage firms uh beginning this week. I have two calls, I think, on Friday, um, so we'll start talking with insurance brokers to um all of those things, right? So property liability, to the extent that we we do engage with it, and I realize there are questions about cyber's uh insurance. Uh, but certainly workers' compensation is one of the factors as well. Those are the major ones. Um, we're not getting um. Bits, but the conversations this week are ones to open up that possibility uh to bring in um. Posals from a couple of firms uh that would then be something that we could look at and make a decision on, so we have. Everything in place come January one. Um. And that's it, I guess. Uh, the, you know, the job offer thing is going out, as I mentioned last week, they all have gone out. I think we have good return rates so far on people applying for their positions. Um, offers are going out. I know I got mine.
About halfway through.
I got mine yesterday. Um, so uh it's all uh, it's all in works, so we hope to have that process completed by. The end of this month, um. At which point then soon after, we're gonna be advertising a few jobs, the jobs that we talked about, we want to hire by January one, that's communications, facilities, and H R. Uh, those, and maybe a couple of other jobs that we're trying to hire by January one, so those will be going out. Uh, probably right coinciding with your November seventh meeting, right in that timeframe. Um, we'll have those in a month, and hopefully can interview and hire some people to bring them on. Um. The I T work is going well. We placed uh. We got the. The order placed for all of the computers uh this week, so that is a um. A bill which you've already approved with the contract, but it's, you know, roughly the public computing and staff computers. I think it's. Somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars is what we're spending on our computers. I thought it's gonna be much higher than that, so that's good news so far. Um, I thought we had. I thought we had said it was gonna be like four fifty or four. Twenty four, four hundred twenty five thousand dollars, so that's good. Um. And yeah, we're still waiting on some of the stuff with regard to the service, but meetings are going well. There's some, there are some complications with regard to the cut over date. I still don't know what happens with the staff on those dates, which you guys approved of. Seven nineteen through twenty second, but I hope, but I'll know by December eighteenth, I promise, uh, what the staff will do. We don't know if it's gonna be a paid.
Better know before that.
I think. I I I, we're asking the city if it could be paid leave because building closure requiring all the technology to be gone. But if it's not a building closure and a paid leave that way, then we will have. Assignments for staff to do from home that they can't do using any computing equipment, because they will not have access to any of the computing equipment that we have, so.
And that's it, all facilities?
That is it, all facilities per three. Well, it will be uh be the six days, actually, because the hot thing is running concurrent with the holiday. That was something we dished my attention, because. I didn't want to be closed for three days and then open for two and closed again for three days, so it's uh, it'll be their their windup. Everybody seems to be working up. That's the end of my report. If you take any questions, if you have any.
Oh, we have a library district transition update too, so folks have questions on that. This would be good time, Sam.
Um, when a current staffer re-appears for their current position and the salary range is posted. Uh, they will be hired at their current pay or fired with the group compensation leave voted on?
They'll be hired at the improved compensation that we voted on, so they they will all get the um. The offer will come through with the pay level itself. So the job they're being offered is the new one, which was their current wage plus. Two dollars and six cents or two.
Sixteen cents.
Sixteen cents an hour. Above what they were.
And then those that are not at that minimum of twenty two forty five are raised up to that.
And then staff above that. It's the four thousand dollar boss.
Yeah, they also do two thousand, two dollars and sixteen cents. Everybody gets two dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, with the exception of the people who are below. Twenty two forty five. It's the two.
Right, they.
So they get, they get that much more. And in some cases, that's a couple dollars more. In some cases, that's ten cents.
And that kicks in in the new year.
Okay.
Start of the new, I mean.
Yeah.
January once.
Any other questions for David on the director update?
Can you just go over the, just the. This leave time thing and then, so you're telling me the facilities would be all closed, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so like your point of like knowing what they're doing, but also what's our timing on public messaging on that?
Yeah, we'll probably be messaging all through December. Uh, yeah, we'll, we usually put signs on the door a week or so in advance if we're gonna be closed for half a day or something like that. In this case, it's a long closure and something we've never done, and I don't think we'll ever do again, so I hope. Um. Yeah, so we'll probably put up signs all throughout the months of December, and. I don't know, we'll probably play it in the newsletter, and we'll do everything we can to notify the public, because it's gonna, it's gonna strike them as weird. Um, and honestly. When the computer people asked me if I had any heartburn, I said I had none about any of the work they had to do, but I do have heartburn about. Closing the library for three days. I, my hope was cut it to the last minute, and I realized it's just not physically possible for safety reasons. Um, I planned to stand at the front door on the day they were doing the computer trade off. I'm saying like. Take whatever you want, like bring it back when you're done. That was really, I, I thought we could manage the library without computers. I mean, back in the day, computers went down. But it's like, there's gonna be wires hanging and people hanging and ladders everywhere, and every wireless hotspot has to be replaced. Uh, and there's gonna be boxes and boxes and boxes of stuff here getting repaired, so I don't think it's gonna be a. A good place for the public to experience. Um. And we do have to think about party. When we reopen, like. The New Year's party happened one week last. I I haven't got a. I always got a budget for it. Maybe we get that out of the trustee.
There you go. A governance issue. What's, so, and there isn't a sequencing of it to like, say, like, I don't know. These branches would be open during this time or whatever, and, you know, while this is closed and, you know, that it would shift over, like.
No, no, the city has got their resources and the floor to do it all, so they're gonna. They're gonna begin the severing and the collecting of all the properties that is the cities. Uh, all at once in all domains of all time. I don't think we have the capacity with the tech firm that we hired and my staff who have, who are going to be working those days to follow in every building in a. As precise in that as quick in matters. City's gonna be able to assemble stuff, but. We'll do our best. Um, I don't have any doubts the city will be able to pull off their end in three days. I'm still a little nervous about. If somebody's gonna be coming out.
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So yeah, I think they've cleaned this thing, well, well, what they. And so reluctantly. I believe, and. Uh, primarily for a safety standard. Just as making sense that we're walking around. We talked about having meeting rooms open. Like, can we just have the meeting rooms open, but there's technology in all meeting rooms, some of which is gonna be taken out. Wires hanging from the ceilings, the uh. Be an interesting six days. And then followed by three days, which are unplanned activities, but maybe those people working get. There's gonna be a lot of scrap, a lot of spending. We have a lot of programs that have to switch over, and I think, you know. Maybe they're gonna be easy. Maybe it's just a matter of like bugging in and. Be doing it, but we have a lot of backup plans in place in case it's, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of people planning on tracking stuff with spreadsheets if we don't get things rolling on January second.
An adventure.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun.
Hmm, okay, so.
The city gonna do with all that hardware they take away?
They're probably gonna store it upstairs and throw it away. I don't know, like, we, we have been, I think. Maybe it's a secret, like. The library is the drop-in hot point for all of the, the access. All to the city, yes, so that it leaves from here, and they usually gather samples here in the station. There's a company that comes. They can, if they choose, uh, I think, don't come to a nonprofit or something like that, but it's. Uh, the cost of, they have to, the city cleans their own, and they they pay for that service offsite, so that's, that. That service is done offsite by a third-party vendor that cleans all the equipment. City, uh.
Yeah.
So it's hard to get it off perfectly.
So will that storage continue? I don't remember that being called out in the I G A.
Uh, no, it was called out in the I G A. I don't know. I mean, I, it may be there's a. There's a bit of a staging area upstairs. It's behind a locked door that nobody ever goes in except for. The I T and some people.
So can you just say again what those dates are?
Uh, it's December nineteenth uh through essentially the twenty fifth.
Thought it was the eighteenth, no?
I think the nineteenth.
It's a Tuesday?
Tuesday, yep. So the nineteenth through twenty fifth. Was, and then we reopen on sixth.
Okay. So if we can, let's move along, because we still need to get to I G As, and I know Sylvia has a hard. Hard end of seven thirty. It'd be great to have her here for I G A discussion if we can. Are there any subcommittee updates?
I have um. Some dates to share. So two meetings ago, or maybe it was last meeting, I mentioned that, um, you know, as a part of like the transition with the library commission. You know, we are, the commission has stopped meeting, and we don't have, our last meeting was held in October and um early October, and we don't have a November, December, but we talked about. And I agreed to help find dates for a tour of the North Boulder. Um. Uh, library site and um checked these two dates with the chair of the library commission, and um. I'd like to share those and see if there's a possible. Opportunity for the trustees to join in this tour. So Monday, the thirtieth. Next week, two thirty to four would be an open time available for a tour, and the tour maybe it'd be an hour, hour and a half-ish thing. And then Wednesday, the first of November, three thirty to five.
So Benita, what would be the best thing just to email you individually if we can make those, one of those? Is that the easiest?
Or to, if you. Want to indicate, so now that would be helpful too.
Unfortunately, I can't do either of those. They're right where my Italian class is.
Well, three thirty to five.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Then let me see what the. See where my other options were. Okay, so. Because I think there were some following dates, and just based on what you just said, let me see if I could find.
Yeah, the afternoon slot is, is that tied up for these?
Um. So, so I have like the following Friday, Wednesday, and Thursday options. I would have to go back and sort of circle back and see.
Be like the third?
Yeah.
Yeah, Fridays are clear for me, so I can do pretty much any time on a Friday.
Okay, so let's just put out that that Friday as an option, and that would be like any time afternoon.
Yeah, I can do any time on a Friday. So we're adding, just adding the third as a possibility?
Yeah. So, John, you could do that. Okay. So that's all I have in terms of a report, but I will. Circle back with folks who aren't here too, to share that and shared in email.
Great, thanks for doing that.
Okay, I'll make whatever work.
Okay, okay.
Um, I just have one update from the budget and finance subcommittee. Um. One thing we chatted about in our last meeting was when David looked at the deferred payment schedule, slightly deferred payment schedule for. Our debt to the city. Um. He realized we might have some funds to invest. Um. And, you know, make a small interest or make make a small return on um over the course of the year, given that we don't need to make full payment by, until the end of twenty twenty four. So um J P Morgan Chase is going to send one of their investment advisors to one of our subcommittee meetings just to give us. An idea of what our options might be for that. For the upcoming year. Um, so Sylvia and I are planning to meet with them actually on the Friday, the third at twelve thirty. Um. So maybe after one thirty, Benita, on the third might be a great time for a tour of the Novo branch, um, so that we can come back to the board with some recommendations.
Great, great. And Benita, I don't know if you've heard, they were saying if it could be um after one thirty on the third. Okay, that would be great, because they have a meeting at twelve thirty on that day. Great. Um, and Sylvia, why don't we do a quick update on what we've been kind of noodling around with Jennifer about the whole policy and governance revisiting piece? Um, let me start, and then you can chime in. Um, remember back in early June when we. Came to the board with the bylaws and the basic structure, we said we'd come back towards the end. came to the board with the bylaws and the basic structure, we said we'd come back towards the end of the year to relook at bylaws and to to start looking on the other policies we need. Um, and then staff has also been looking at the library policies, the operational and administrative policies and figuring out which ones we need new, which ones we need updated and which ones we can just carry over wholesale. So Sylvia and I are trying to put our heads together in early November to get our arms around the workload for the government set. And Jennifer and Adriana have been looking at the policy ones. We're going to sit down with them also and then come back to the board, hopefully with a work plan for this piece. And there's going to be quite a bit of work in this. If anyone else is excited about writing policies, let us know. Um, so we've got some good go bys, uh, so this whole, all these conversations about different kinds of policies, um, will be in part of that. And I think from what Jennifer is saying, the first set of library and operational policies, um, new ones we need are financial. So it seems like it'd be good to have budget and finance involved in those along with governments as we draft those. And I think one thing for us to think about is as far as library policies are concerned, I don't think those are really governments per view. So question is whether it's helpful to have a subcommittee or committee of the board that re-reviews these policies before they come to the board or whether they come straight to the board, which is the library commission, the way the library commission does it right now. I don't have an opinion on that, but that's something to talk about. Um, presumably we'll also be talking about the process for trustee appointment as part of this as well. So if there's things.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
La biblioteca se cerrará en cinco minutos. Por favor, concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
There's things you think of that you think we need to raise in the context of whole, I'll call it governance. There's a governance discussion, a policy discussion. Send them to me or to Sylvia. We've got a pretty comprehensive list of policies from the state library, the stuff Kim has given us. Um, and so Sylvia, anything you want to chime in and add to with that?
No, I think you covered it all. And I think the key thing is just um, having a good plan for how we're going to tackle it over time because it's not going to be something that's just going to happen, you know, in one fell swoop. It's going to be a sustained effort to get us there.
Yeah.
I'd initially envisioned that there would be an opportunity for the current library commissioners, so three others besides Sylvia and myself, to um, to come to a meeting to have some kind of transitional conversation that maybe relates to policy or some elements, I guess, of one body's transition to another. Um, so I would still like to see that in place. And and I think some of these, because I think we will all need to be paying attention to these governance issues beyond you know, any short window timeframe. I wonder if some of those discussions could be just as a committee of the whole and not a committee of two that's, you know, has the burden of bringing this stuff back to us and, you know, making it shape in the way that that can work. I don't know.
Well, I think, at least I was envisioning that we would bring back the work plan as a committee of the whole, and that might be a good time to include the library commission. Here's what we're looking at as the policies to be reviewed and transitioned and over time and get their input on that. Once we have that work plan, then I think we'll have a, you know, this is the set of policies that come up now from commission standpoint, it usually took about two months, I think, to go through the process of staff doing their internal piece to review a policy and recommend changes and then coming to the board and going back. So I don't know if library commission would want to be involved. This is going to be going on over the course of several months into the year.
Yeah.
Um, but I think certainly to do something where we invite them to join us as this discussion as we look at the transition plan, I think that would be great. I think that's probably going to be one of the first two meetings in December, Sylvia. Is that your guess? Yeah, I know for me personally, I'm hoping to spend those weeks we have off in the latter part of November, just trying to get my head around um, all of this. And Sylvia and I have talked about giving up ones. We have some good go bys for policies. We've been looking at Douglas County and Mesa particularly. So that's a helpful, we're not starting from scratch.
So I wonder if there's a way to sort through and to even have like sort of a first tier of like those things that need to be in place by January one or or, you know.
That's what we're aiming for, but I don't know that anything's going to be in place by January one. But yeah, that's what we're aiming for is is the tier of, I mean, you, I think leadership team has already developed the first tier of the library policies, right? And we need to figure out the tier of the governance policies. And then especially the finance ones, which I think are the, some of the first ones figure out with finance team where to put it through.
So is that a shareable document of the policies that you have?
The um, schedule? Yes.
Yeah, or yeah.
I just finished it Monday, haven't had a chance to write anything and send it to you all.
Okay.
Yes, I can share it.
That would be, I would appreciate seeing that. Um, but if we could maybe plan to invite the library commission to one of the December meetings.
Yep. That'd be great. Either the fifth or the twelfth. Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
And then while we're talking about meetings, um, we need to um, have a motion to set our special meetings for November and December. And because we're not meeting every week, we actually have a list here of when we are and when we are not. Um, so I asked for.
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today and we look forward to seeing you again.
Atención. La biblioteca está cerrada. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy y esperamos verlos nuevamente.
So I'm going to stake the motion and maybe somebody can move it. Um, so we need to move that we will have a special meeting on November seventh. That our regular meeting for November will be on November fourteenth instead of November twenty first. That we will have a special meeting on December fifth. And that our regular meeting for December will be December twelfth instead of December nineteenth.
So moved.
So moved. Good. Thank you, Sam. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, Jen seconds. All those in favor?
I've tried.
And then a follow up question. Do we want to make any of those meetings fully virtual?
I guess if if there's one where the commission is going to try to say, I would for that to be in person.
Of course.
But otherwise I'm fine.
Okay. Okay. So we have, um, based on conversation just before this meeting, we have tentatively scheduled, um, actually we've scheduled, it's not tentatively, an update on the literacy and outreach strategic plan for November fourteenth. Um, is that one that's better to do in person? Yeah, okay. So what about virtual on November seventh?
Remind me when we think the council's voting on the I G A?
Um, we think they're voting on the second.
So I think that seven would be fine virtual. Okay.
So let's notice that as a virtual meeting then. And then do you want to do either the fifth or the twelfth as a virtual meeting?
If we have the commission, I guess it depends, but I I'm going to aim for the fifth for to invite the library commission.
So let's tentatively assume that the twelfth is a virtual meeting. Okay, great. All right, Kim, do you want to launch us on our multi-document I G A discussion?
The best way to do this. That's, I do. We start with the the three parties. That's the appointment idea. They did a cover memo of that one. That they didn't expect to have to address it yet, but um, the city and county are moving forward. I had a conversation with the city and county attorneys and they're saying that we are not going to convince their sides that um, that the library district should control the process. Doesn't mean we can't see kind, but that's what they're saying. I tried to figure out a way to, you know, the 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 main reason we want to control the process is what concern that politically, the county commissioners that turn over and then they're going to turn on the library board, turn on maybe the whole library. So how do we, how do we maintain some control over the process? Uh, in the memo, I suggested one way is within the appointment I G A. We could add uh, a reference to the A L A's ethics standards for trustees as well as the library, um, let's go all rights, bill of rights as standards for applicants. So they can either acknowledge that or can they have to have some demonstrated uh, efforts at supporting those concepts? Um, and that seemed, I did talk with to Chris about that and the two county attorney, the county attorney and the city attorney. They seem to think it would fly, but don't know yet. County attorney's meeting with the county commissioners tomorrow afternoon. If you want to to go there, we all take care of that in the morning and she'll have that to present to them. Um, and then Johnny, do you want to make your comments?
Let's take this one first. I I mean, I think that's a great idea. Does anybody object to including references to the library bill of rights and the board of ethics or the the ethics? Um, and this is a way to try and maintain that, uh, you know, especially against book banning and those kinds of things because the bill of rights and the ethics fall into that sphere. Um, that seemed to me to be a good approach. Yeah, I see Sam. Yeah, Benita. Yeah. Everybody, yeah. So let's do that. Um, and so what I was proposing, I I think we already lost the argument about having us control the process. I appreciate you continuing to push that. But when we went to council in September, um, I heard perhaps incorrectly that they felt doing this process of having two commissioners, two council members and then two trustees in a non-voting role for three years made sense. The I G A is written right now, does not have that three year limitation in there. And I heard council members say they thought that made sense from a transition. So I think putting that three years in makes sense. That's what Claire originally proposed, Benita, right?
Yes.
Um, so I think we'll advocate for that. And then the other thing I think we should advocate for is for the library to be the one that generates the questions for people. And that takes in the applications and basically controls the timeline. Um, I'm very concerned that if this becomes something that the city or the county does, it's going to get lost, just like it did last year. It's not in sequence with their own processes and they don't have an incentive to move our stuff along as we have seen with the I G As. So I'd like to propose that that our group does the questions. We can start with the process that was used last year and just have the questions revised and take in the applications and work with the selection committee, giving the selection committee obviously opportunity to comment on those. From what you had reported when you talked to Claire, Benita, I think she had the misunderstanding that we wouldn't have staff or a structure to do that. And of course, we have the library and the staff has been doing this with the library commission here. So it's nothing new for them. So personally, I'd like to see us propose that as well.
So when you use the term controlling the process, you know, you're talking about is the application process or how does that term controlling the process? What is that representing?
That's part of it. So part of it is the the timing of it all. Um, to me, the more important thing is I've had to deal with so many of these attacks on boards of trustees because of the book banning, because of all kinds of things. Um, there are county commissioners change over and they attempt to, it always starts with trying to get rid of the library director. Uh, they know they can't do that. So then they start plugging away, trying to pull the board of trustees out. Um, we've got it going on right now. I had a conference call about one today, um, that we're getting ready to have a big fight on. Um, so what what we like to see is that you can control the process in first of all, determining who should be a trustee and then promote that person to the board of county commissioners and the city, and then they vote up or down. And if they vote down, comes back to you and you put up another person. We're trying to, I'm trying to get as close as possible to that in here. So, um, they definitely want to be involved. And I think Johnny's suggestion is good. Part of the reason, all of the reason for including these other two documents from A L A in here is to kind of narrow that process so that if the board of county county commissioners does turn over at some point, um, we've got a fixed set of criteria to start with for the trustee application process.
And so what I'm proposing is a compromise to the full control, which is we still have the selection committee getting a slate of candidates among whom they select, but we're the ones doing the questions. We're the ones actually collecting all the applications. We're the ones keeping the timeline going. So hopefully things can happen in an appropriate way. And then hopefully after three years, we revisit and move to the process that Kim describes. Jen, was that you I heard?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask if it would make any difference for us to use different verbs that don't have the word control in them? Because that seems to be very triggering to everybody. Like, could we say we will manage the applicant process and set the timeline? You know, or you know, like just not use the word control because I feel like that's that's the thing. Like if we said, hey, we want to take the load off of you by managing the administration of this process. And through that we have influence, like it it just feels like using different verbs may be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yep, that's important, I believe. And what what's being suggested now is not, it it's quite a bit different than what's in here, but at the moment you have two trustees sitting on the selection committee, not in a voting position, but I think we can just turn this a little bit to say that those trustees will take the first stab at the questions um, and getting the process moving forward, working with the selection committee. Then they can review it and move it on. Maybe if we say it the right way, Jen, it'll maybe be appreciated. We'll see.
So who is on the selection committee as it's defined here, as it's referenced here?
It will be two city council members and two county commissioners selected by those bodies. And the two trustees would be selected by our body.
And the trustees are the only non-voting?
Be non-voting, yeah.
And so my understanding, you're right, that the city changed its view of this?
I don't think so. It was the board of county commissioners.
Okay.
I don't think this.
The attorneys.
Yeah, this is all still just at the staff level. I mean, there's the county, the county commissioners have not weighed in. And that's my bigger concern about all of this. They are trying to get this I G A completed to go to council on November second, and we won't even have a chance to review it, which I think is extremely inappropriate. Um, so that's another issue. And I don't know if it's possible for us to try and participate tomorrow in this county commissioner meeting. It seems like it would be appropriate to have us at the table. I don't know what the timing is and I don't know if you're available, Benita, or I am. It just depends on what time it is.
And is, what is the agenda item on their meeting tomorrow?
It's just an executive session to talk about this. So it is an executive session. So I doubt we'll, we'll get in there.
Okay, because I'm just thinking that it was, um, did I speak with her?
Marta, you spoke with Marta.
Like following that and and I is it appropriate to share that here?
Yeah.
I mean, but again, like we had, yeah, um, so she had, I got the sense from her that she didn't like totally buy into the previous selection process because she acknowledged that she was the one who, you know, could not attend the meetings and therefore it delayed the process by several weeks to reschedule. could not attend the meetings and therefore it delayed the process by several weeks to reschedule that. And so I got the sense from her that she was looking for a, you know, a different process or some that, you know, that didn't delay an appointment process that wasn't in sync with their county appointment process and wasn't in sync with the city's appointment process. And so and and she, the way that we had left it was that she was going to seek a time to have that discussion. Would let me know when they were discussing that, but that's, it wasn't necessarily to be an executive session for discussion, so.
And I think this came up because they realized all of a sudden that this council's going away and they're trying to rush this in. So this council can approve it without really thinking about it. And we've heard similar to what Benita said, is what we've heard from Nicole and Erin, who were the two on the selection committee with council. That they really think that this needs to be something that is not run the way it was last time. Because it was so difficult to get the electeds together. And the way staff managed it, everything was, you know, that that they didn't draft questions and give them to the electeds. They asked the electeds to send them questions. I mean, it just went back and forth. It was, it was a much more complicated process than it needed to be. But now that we have that apparatus in place, it worked well. It's a good starting point. So taking that and collapsing it down in terms of timeline and letting us help manage that, I think makes sense.
Yeah, I will massage this language and they haven't seen this yet. Well, they've seen part of it. And change, make that little tweak. It's not really that that big of a change. Let's see where it goes.
Okay. And I think also remind them that this board has to agree to this agreement. They seem to be sort of forgetting that in this. Things together, so.
I think it's more the city pushing the schedule. It is the county. I know it is. They just want to get it done in one, one fell swoop.
It's the city attorneys pushing this. It is not the city. Because I don't think the city council is pushing this at all. And I think it's going to be really hard to get their attention.
Is there any option to go back to what was originally in the draft IGA? It was just a process through controlling or managing through the trustees, that body, right?
Not what the attorneys are saying.
And that was also, that first draft, um, we put together totally the way we wanted it. And that did go to the county commissioners. And that was when they came back with the idea that, you know, some additions where they were going to be involved.
I think what went to city council in September was this compromise version, which they said, yes, this makes sense to us as a compromise.
For three years.
For three years, yeah. Uh, we didn't have the conversation with council about who actually managed the process in terms of the questions and such. It was just the, you know, you have the two trustees on it, but I think that's the expectation the council members have.
So in this, can it, can it reference that the process will be managed by the library administration?
Yeah, I think what I'll do, um, I think it's included in here. This paragraph where it says no changes is the one that discusses the makeup of the selection committee. So look at the actual document. Paragraph 2.1A. Talks about the selection committee. And on that selection committee will be two trustees. I'm just going to break that into two paragraphs. Uh, and have those trustees initiate the process. Bring the questions. So you'll be in the background doing that. Those two trustees can bring the questions and set the schedule to make this all happen.
So does it name the library district as the administrator of the application process?
I don't think it'll say that, but it'll say that the, the board of trustees will initiate, yeah, the application process. After bringing the questions and the whole application package to the selection committee. And they can collect those, bring them back to the selection committee and so committee can take it from there.
Basically, the process would be the trustees develop some questions, take them to the selection committee. Everybody agrees on the questions. Goes back to the library then to put together the apparatus to invite applications, to sort through those, put them into a form, to go to the selection committee then for them to consider as to which ones they're going to interview and which ones they're going to take forward in the process, right? Still a clunky process, but it's
It is.
Better than maybe the best we can do. Yeah. And if, I mean, if you don't, if we aren't happy with this, we can just say, we aren't playing. You know, you need to let us step back and take some time to work through this instead of trying to cram it through at the last minute. I think that is also an option if we think that is better. And we can spend some time sitting down and talking to commissioners and council members and figuring this out. So.
David, we can't, we can't figure, the microphone's not picking.
Administering the process. If it's, if it falls on us, you can direct that activity. Imagine if it's not us, then you're waiting on somebody to respond. They're going to be looking for somebody who will do it. And I guarantee you that's what happened last time. Uh, and so there's not somebody whose job this is.
And they wouldn't let you do it, right?
So, you know, if it does, if it does fall to us to administer the process, we're more than happy to do that.
And that's why I'm just pushing that one to just like asking it like, why can't you, why can't we gracefully say that?
It's not able that the applications would be on the library's webpage.
Yeah, but I mean, why can't we say that in, in that?
I think it will.
Pose it.
Yeah, the the broken out paragraph will say that. So you will initiate it.
We will initiate it in, in January.
But beyond seeing the certain trustees, I just think the administration. And he can, needs to state that clearly, like the administration of the process.
It can say that.
Okay, that I would be really happy with that because then I think it's clear and nobody's speculating or thinking that it's them.
Yeah, I'm hoping the place that they really want their hands in is that selection committee. And so if we initiate on the process, take the materials to the selection committee. Hopefully that's a, that's fine.
They, I mean, the appointment needs to be made by the middle of April, right?
Yeah, if for, uh, you'll also have people going off the board.
Well, I know, but for, for this first time, if we're to lay it out, because I don't think they have any notion in their heads. So if we could put a timeline on it, you know, we will initiate questions in January. The selection committee will be formed in January. The questions will be given to the selection committee in February. And then the package will be completed and the library will post the questions and do the applications in February. And then in March, the packages will be given to the selection committee for their review so that they can have appointments done by the middle of April. And that might help them see the logic of it. Sylvia, Jen, does this make sense to you guys?
Makes sense.
Okay, Sylvia, I know you're about to head off and get something to do, envision McDonald's. Do you have any input on anything that's been coming through with the two-party IGA, the leases, the license?
I have not had a chance to look at them. So I mean, I I'm sorry to say that I might have input, but I I don't have it at this time.
Okay, I looked through them quickly and have a couple of questions, but nothing jumped out at me hugely. I guess one big question while we still have Sylvia, Kim, the, the insurance pieces seems to be the least outstanding thing. Is that a big deal for us or is that something that can fall into the you know, changes that are substantially similar?
I think it's going to have to, because what they did is they spent about two and a half weeks going out to their risk management person, who I think is at their insurance company. And they came back with like two and a half pages of requirements on the library, which includes um auto, auto insurance and um all kinds of things that I don't, doesn't have anything to do with these buildings.
I, I don't think it looks bad. I mean, we won't be getting a, being open, uh, like.
And you will be insuring it.
Yeah, we'll be ensuring it.
But why does the city's lease, yeah, that's, those are my biggest concerns. And I, and the other thing is it doesn't appear, it looks like the insurance person wasn't told that we are a government. Um, so the CGIA limits our liability to about $350,000 for any personal injuries. And in here, it's five million. It's just not necessary. The city has the same protection that we do. Um, nobody's ever going to pay that. The other one that bothers me, but I'm not sure what to do about it, is we, it has us having a $5 million insurance for flood damage to this building. And replacement. So if it's void in a flood.
Sure, yeah. Why should the tenants carry insurance?
Yeah. Replace the owner. Yes. So I thought on that one, I might counter and say, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have insurance on it, but it's for our interest.
Content, other contents, right?
You know, or, or if we carry that full amount of insurance. If, if you decide not to rebuild the building, we get the value of our possession for 20 years. You get the residual value, something like that. Just there's, it, it's, it's asking too much. Yeah. And I don't know that we'll, I don't think we can get that result before the second because they're going to have to go back to their insurance people. But I think the city council's approval could be uh, subject to any changes in the insurance. And those insurance provisions are in the lease forms, which are also uh, referenced in the IGA as substantially in the form we're going to enter into. So we can get around that.
So I think our goal tonight is to be able to approve this in this form that is substantially the same, so it can go forward to council for the same type of action. And then we can work out these last niggling things which are in the leases and the licenses. I don't think there's anything in the IGA outstanding at this point, is there?
I don't think so either. And the license, I think the license is great. We actually got through that. Uh, all the changes that we requested the last time we looked at it were made.
Um, they even added us as, as someone in the special permit review process that can refer for reimbursement and that sort of stuff. So that was great.
The way that'll work is they'll, you'll be like a referral agency. So if there's a, if somebody's using the parking lot, they have to come to you to get a permit as well. Then you can charge them whatever you need to. So that one's good. Might as well pass them out to this because I've got a.
So I had, I had one question that in, that went between the noble lease and the IGA. Um, and that is that in the noble lease, it says the property will be released. Let's see, release the possessor to the tenant within 10 days of the certificate of occupancy. And 2.3.2 of the IGA says within six months following issuance of the seat, the city will lease. So I just think those need to be reconciled. Um, and the only other question I had was on the main lease. It's still this question about the silly sidewalk on the Arapahoe side. Um, they clarified it. So at least we know what they're talking about. But at least the way it reads now, the library is responsible for clearing snow from a portion of the sidewalk on Arapahoe from the east side of the entry plaza to basically where these section eight houses are. Who's clearing the rest of the sidewalk and why are we responsible for that little bit? I mean, it just doesn't seem to make sense logically.
Yeah.
If they could ask, if you could ask them to clarify it.
It does make, it does say that they are clearing the rest, but you're right. It doesn't make any sense.
It says they're clearing the multi-use paths. It does not say they're clearing this. No, it says they're clearing the entry once a day. And then he said they're responsible for clearing the multi-use paths. But that sidewalk is not considered as multi-use path. So that's, I, yeah, that's why it's a question.
There's a dedicated patron that's there who comes here all the time. She got her check for, uh, what was it? What does? She got her check for the
The tax relief during COVID?
Tax relief during COVID, she gave it to us.
Oh.
I, I, I will go ahead and shovel that walkway to her doorstep.
Yeah.
And she sends me nice notes all the time. I have them. Look, she found in the donation sale. She, she has.
Nice.
Interlocutor.
And this isn't about, you know, complaining about doing it. It's just, it's
Just why, why are we doing it?
A bunch of more sidewalk that needs to have snow removed, so we don't want to lose that. Those are my only questions. And then the um in the online version, the high, these, the changes were highlighted or the things for us to look at it are highlighted. It looks like that didn't come through with the Xerox copies. So if you want to, oh, I guess some of them did, yeah.
Here we go.
If for some reason it didn't come through on this.
Yeah.
Rest of them, I think, did. It's, yeah, it's very great.
Most of this stuff was still far down in the weeds. It didn't seem like we deal the insurance to me was the only question because there's a lot of
So what will city council be receiving and when?
Well, tomorrow, um, I will get back to the city attorneys. This goes in their packet tomorrow afternoon as a, as close to final version as possible.
This being the IGA and all of the attachments.
Correct. And then hopefully I'll have a conversation with them to make sure that the approval, I think the approval of the IGA, it is fine, but the leases and the other attachments have to be, you know, substantially in that form, which is what the IGA says.
Are they also planning to put the three-party IGA into the council packet tomorrow afternoon?
Find out. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if they.
Okay, and if they do, just tell them that they need to say, we have not reviewed it. I think some phone calls to Aaron and to Chris to let them know that may be helpful.
Chris, by the way, has been just great.
Oh, Chris is always great. He's super fantastic. Yeah, he's super, very practical. Yeah.
All right, well, I'm going to head out now. Um, I'm
Oh, you're dinner, Sylvia.
Next week. I'll talk to you all soon.
Okay, take care. Actually, I should have got her to vote first. We still have a quorum though. We still have four. Okay.
Thank, that was much easier than I expected.
So we need to vote approval of this, right?
Substantially in the form that you saw tonight with changes discussed.
So um try and do the language then. So um we should move to approve the IGA between the city of Boulder and the Boulder Public Library District substantially in the form presented to us on October 23rd including the attachments. So moved. Okay, second. Sam? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, great. Wonderful. And thank you, Kim, for being on top of this. This has been just a whirlwind these last five days, but Thursday deadline just kept creeping and creeping and creeping, didn't it?
That's why I'm going on vacation tomorrow. For the weekend.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Hi.
I'm going to regular touch with the resume. So she's really nice.